4:01 PM, so we'll go ahead and call the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission to our regular meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Any revisions?
Motion to approve the minutes or the agenda for July 11th.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Next, on the item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on June 13th. Any revisions or questions on the minutes?
Motion to approve, Steve Trost.
Second, Listico.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next, we'll have the financial report for May 2023.
This is Schrader with staff. Apologize for that not being mailed out. We do have it in front of you for those in the audience. This financial report is through May, which puts us at 92% of the fiscal year. Looking on the expense side, we're pretty close to right on track. The total at the bottom is at 93, so 1% over, pretty close. And on the revenue side, looking down there, I see a few that are under, but several that are over 100%, which is a good thing on the revenue side. So we're looking good there as well.
Any questions from the commission? If not, do we have a motion to receiving basis on file?
Still moved, surfing.
All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is a time for oral presentations. This is for anyone in the chambers or on the phone or by Zoom who is here to speak on a non-agenda item.
I was wondering if we had any updates on the flagpole coming into town off of Interstate 380? We brought it up twice.
This is Schrader with staff. We, I do know that our office has had some conversations with a representative for US Cellular who maintains that cell tower there. We are waiting to get additional word back from them, but it looks like the plan will be to get a new standalone flagpole kind of in front of the tower since the tower will no longer accommodate an actual flag like it used to. So, in progress still. Thank you.
Anyone on phone or by Zoom to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, anyone in the chambers? Okay, then we will go on to new business. The first item on the agenda is a request by the Pentecostal Church Born Again for a special permit for a religious facility in the M1 Light Industrial District located at 726 and 728 Logan Avenue. And this is on pages 12 through 19 of your packet. The staff report, please.
This is Blanco Staff. The request for a religious facility would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The site previously housed Vibe Cafe. The property in question is Zoned M1 Light Industrial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. To the north is the City of Waterloo Lift Station and Canadian National Railroad. To the south is Greer Funeral Home. Zone C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and residences, Zone C2 Commercial District. To the west is vacant land, Zone C2 Commercial District and Logan Convenience Store. Zoned M1 Light Industrial District. To the east is Highway 63, Zoned R3 Multiple Residents District. And Sullivan Memorial Park, Zoned R2 One and Two Family Residence District. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for a religious facility in an existing commercial building. The congregation currently has approximately 10 members. The sanctuary assembly area is approximately 3,000 square feet in size. Based on the size of the sanctuary assembly area, the occupancy would be for 200 persons. Parking requirements for a religious facility is one parking space for each four persons of maximum occupancy of the sanctuary assembly area. This would require 50 parking spaces. Currently, there is space for approximately 56 parking spaces in the parking lot. The applicant will need to submit a floor plan of the building to the building department to clarify parking requirements as well as other building requirements. A site plan will need to be submitted by the applicant showing access and parking and a parking stall layout. An adjacent property owner did express their opposition to the request, and I did have another call asking about the request, but no opposition was stated. Fans with the engineering department asked if the applicant has identified an access point for the site, to which Blanco noted an access point is being requested with a site plan. The applicant should be asked if they plan to do repairs to the parking lot as it is in need of improvements. Well overstated, the fire department will need to see a proper exit from the worship area. The building department may need to review further because of the change of use, and the applicant does plan to repair the parking lot in the next few years. Therefore, the staff recommends the request by the Pentecostal Church Born Again for a special permit for religious facility in M1 Light Industrial District located at 726, 728 Logan Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, on the surrounding neighborhood, and the request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. Subject to the following conditions: A floor plan of the building is submitted to staff for further review, and that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, etc., including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage setbacks, etc.
Initial questions for staff?
Engineer Dennis Gens asked about the access to the site. Are the side, what appear to be driveways, are those public right of way or are those private drives? Have they submitted a site plan yet showing how they're going to access?
They have not submitted the site plan yet showing. I have had discussions with them, and it sounds like they would like to lean toward the south one. That is owned by someone separately, though. It's not a city-owned right of way.
Schrader with staff, to the south is privately owned by a separate individual. To the north, I believe is technically platted as an alley. So it has some potential for access, but then engineering is going to look at alley if they were to use it as a primary access point.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Wilber. So when it was, did you say it used to be a restaurant?
Vibe Cafe.
Yeah, it used to be Vibe Cafe.
How did, I mean, how did people access when it was a restaurant?
I would assume from the north point, but I am not sure.
Okay. Also too, I was going to ask, when the adjacent property owner called or expressed opposition, did they say why?
Yes, so they mainly stated the issues with the Logan Convenience Store across the street as well as supposedly there was burning on the special permit site of debris possibly a week before the call, which was maybe a week or so ago.
Okay, but otherwise, aside from the burning, it was the convenience store across the street?
Yeah, the convenience store across the street's debris and
Oh, okay.
Different things like that.
Okay. Any other initial questions for staff?
Yes, were any fire sprinkler requirements brought up or looked at? How close was the size of the building and capacity to requiring that?
Those were not mentioned at the tech review meeting. I believe they have to have 5,000 square feet to be up to that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they'll be under it, but they'll need a floor plan.
Okay. 5,000 is a general rule, but there's also, it can vary for assembly, and this is assembly, so it'll depend on that occupancy rating.
With that brought up, if someone were to do a motion to approve it, which I'm not making right now, we could put fire codes in that following condition.
Sure, okay, absolutely. We intend that to kind of be a catch-all, but yeah.
Any other initial questions? Is Mr. Martinez here and want to address the commission? Feel free to come forward and if you'd like and state your name for the record and address and if you'd like to say anything.
Oh, hi. God bless everybody. Thank you for letting me come in today. Really happy to come for first time, City Hall of Waterloo. So I kind of called, find out their address because I don't, it hard for me to come in so far. I live about hour and a half away and decided to buy this property as for church using it. And I spoke with the retailer, I mean with the realter people selling, and they say they got the description. They said use as a church as well, because they've been like a nightclub or something before in the past. And well, I know they heard, well, after I bought, I started hearing bad news about the place, not before. So another thing is the guys who owns the little kitty corner, the real tract of property in there, they contacted me a couple of weeks ago, a weeks ago probably, and he said they want to donate that piece of property to our church as well. So I don't even know the guy. They say, they even tell me, you got a meeting coming soon in 11. I say, yeah. He said, okay, I want to donate that piece of property to you guys, just find out what the city, what their requirements is. I say, okay, I will find out what's going on. So like I spoke with somebody, maybe it was with you, talking over the phone, it asking for parking space. So we got some drawing maps in here, so I don't know if that'd be good enough for you guys to take a look at it. I do not specialize in this thing, so we kind of marked the way we want to lay in the park, the space. So I don't know if you want to take a look at it. We got the market, where the bathrooms is, where the kitchens is, where the stage, all the kind of stuff like that. So I hope it's something we can work out and that kind of thing. Sorry, it's not very clear draw. I'm not good at that, but.
Mr. Martinez, have you had any discussion with any of the property owners around you in regards to accessing?
No, no, I do not, because very much like I say, somebody say about the phone number called the people own the funeral driveway in there. So I think was asking to, to the girl over here, and I don't call this person because we tried to use it in the north part of it, the building, as is entry or exit to the building. We got two way, you got a, on the south side of the building, you got a little space in there, we can take it as a driveway as well. And we also have the, all the alleyway go around the building. We can enter for the north side, our parking lot. So I assume you guys have the planning for the parking lot, how big is the property in total? So I did not good measurement what the parking space got to be. So I assume it is big enough for 56 parking space, maybe more or maybe less, I'm not sure, not quite sure about. But looks like it was a nightclub before. Do I have, maybe I got wrong information? Yeah, this is what the guy selling to me was telling me. He run the property for, say, five some years, 15 years, something like that. And they got a whole bunch of like a bar in there, got a, all kinds of beer cans in there all over the place. They got all kinds of junk stuff. We take about a week to clean the whole, the whole building inside. And we are still working on it. Yeah, it was a mess. It still is, but now we get most of the stink stuff away. So they say use it as a nightclub, and that's why I asking him, do you think it is be good for church? They say, sure, well, why not? I mean, they have a nightclub in here before, and he said, well, I don't think that there be any possible be a church because it's a holy place, which is what we need, right? Like I say, I don't know, I mean, I kind of drawing the map. If you guys make, if you make it you happy, that's, that's fine. I mean, I leave everything in your hands, fruits my Lord, and seconds you guys. If we can use as a church, I really happy to have it. We pay a quarter better money for, and you know, trust in my Lord Jesus and trust in you guys as well. We can work something together to see that that happen. So the challenge, I don't know if you, some of you guys know who owns the piece of property in there? This kitty corner with the train track and back in my building. So they say want to donate that piece of property in there. So if we, I don't know what you guys requiring for that happen. I got his phone number, and he said if somebody got a question, they can call him.
You'll have to bring in additional information about that. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, right, okay.
We can look at that.
I will talk to him again.
Bring in a map of the property.
You bet. Okay, I don't know if you want anymore.
That's all city property, though, and it's not for sale. So I'm not sure which property he's talking about.
Is there somebody on the phone that is wanting to speak on this item? Okay, does the commission have any other questions for Mr. Martinez? If you're on the, appearing by Zoom or by phone, can you please mute? Thank you. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, you guys. God bless you, everybody. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who is here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, is there anyone else on phone or by Zoom here to speak on this agenda item?
I make a motion to approve the request by the Pentecostal Church Born Again for a special permit for religious facility in the M1 Light Industrial District located at 726, 728 Logan Avenue. Subject to a floor plan of the building is submitted to staff for review, and that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, and street access.
Second, surfing?
And fire.
Codes.
It's not listed.
All right, any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried.
The planning commission does just make a recommendation only. This will go to the Board of Adjustment for the final say, and that'll be on Tuesday, the 25th at 4:00 PM. It would probably be a good idea.
And if you get additional information, you know, continue to forward it to the city or stay in contact with them, okay? Okay, we will move on. The time is 4:21 PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC for a site plan amendment for a truck and trailer washing facility in the BP Business Park District located southwest of 3124 Titan Trail, pages 20 through 32 of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga, standing I, Emily Saliga. Do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June 22nd, 2023. We have a motion received and placed this notice on file.
Still moved, surfing?
Second, Listico.
Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. We'll have the staff report, please.
Just starting off with staff, the applicant's requesting construct a, construct a trailer and, truck and trailer wash in the Greenbelt Center, south of the New Warren Trucks Facility. The request would construct a truck and trailer would not, wash would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as it would appear to be compatible with other trucking related activities in the area. The proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The site is served by Cyclone Drive and Greyhound Drive, which are classified as local streets, with Greyhound Drive connecting to West Ridgeway Avenue, which is a minor arterial, and Sergeant Road, US 63, which is a principal arterial. There are no trails or sidewalks in the immediate area, but a sidewalk is required on the north side of Cyclone Drive, and a trail is located on the west side of US 63, 0.25 miles to the east. The City of Waterloo Complete Streets Advisory Committee recommended that a sidewalk be required along the east side of Greyhound Drive with hopes that it could eventually connect with pedestrian traffic with Loves Travel Center to the south. The area in question has been Zoned BP Business Park District since March 3rd, 2008, when it was, land was rezoned from M2P Planned Industrial District. Surrounding land used to send their zoning just next to those falls. To the north is vacant land and the New Warren Truck Facility, Zone BP Business Park District. To the south is vacant land in the Loves Facility, Zone BP Business Park District. To the east is a detention pond in Titan Trails, Zone BP Planned Industrial District. And to the west is vacant land, Zone BP Business Park District and M2P Planned Industrial District. They will need to submit a stormwater plan to Engineering Department for review and approval. The proposed facility is in a 100-year flood plain as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administrative Flood Insurance Rate Map Committee Number 1900250284F dated July 18th, 2011, and all buildings will need to be built one foot above the base flood elevation. The applicant's requesting to build a truck and trailer wash at the corner of Cyclone Drive and Greyhound Drive. The proposed facility would be located across Cyclone Drive from the recent completed Warner Trucking Facility. Site plan shows a main building that will have still siding, one overhead door on both the east and west side of the building to allow access for trucks to the truck wash, one overhead door and loading dock on the east side, and an overhead door on the west side, the building without a loading dock. An access door and window will also be located on the west side of the property. Site plan shows parking for five personal vehicles in the parking spaces with one handicap stall on the west side of the building. In addition to the truck washing area, there will also be a mechanical room, restroom, office. The City of Waterloo Complete Streets Advisory Committee is recommending that a sidewalk be required along the east side of the drive with hopes that it could eventually connect to Loves Travel Center. Planning is reviewing this issue, given that sidewalk is not required as part of the plat, and Greyhound Drive does have ditch drainage. Engineering did question whether sidewalks were required on Cyclone Drive. Dated dedication specifies sidewalks are required on the north side of Cyclone Drive, not the south side. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC for a site plan amendment for a trucking washing facility in the BP Business Park District located southwest of 3124 Titan Trail be approved for the following reasons. The request is in the performance with a comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, and the request would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, etc., including but not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, etc.
This is Commissioner Wilber. So just to clarify, Complete Streets is recommending a sidewalk along Greyhound Drive?
Correct.
And the north or the, and the south side of Cyclone Drive or just along Greyhound?
Just along Greyhound. Yeah. But as noted, it's ditch drainage in that area, so, and we're not exactly sure if there would be right of way to actually put in a sidewalk with the drainage.
How, I mean, how far up does along Greyhound does the ditch drainage go? Or is it just a specific section or all along Greyhound?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, I mean, without additional details, I see where they might be recommending that with Loves being to the south. And then there is the trail along 63. Currently, with, and I know trucks aren't supposed to park along Greyhound, but they still do. So a lot of times pedestrians are walking right along Greyhound to get to Loves if trucks are still parked along there. So I see, you know, and typically we try to, you know, take their recommendations into consideration in regards to complete streets. But I guess if feasibility, if there's no way it can be done?
Yeah, that would, it would be up to engineering and planning to, I mean, whether it's going to fit or not.
Okay. Or if it can be, I don't know if there's a setback further past the ditch. I don't know how far the ditch or where the.
Yeah, there is. I mean, yeah, we've been looking at it. There is not a lot of room there, so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff?
So there is no, there's no curb and gutter along Greyhound Drive, correct? It's just shoulder.
Yeah. Yeah, when this portion was plotted was before even Loves was envisioned being there, so.
I'm just trying to figure out how to craft the motion, knowing that there's, there could be significant changes to requiring a sidewalk, but yet we don't know if it's going to fit yet. And who's going to be responsible for making sure that it does work when you have a ditch covert shoulder situation?
This is Schrader with staff. Another concern that the planning department noted was that when this area was plotted, that was discussed, that was decided to require sidewalk on one side of most of the new streets being plotted. Greyhound was not included in that because Greyhound already existed and had those complications. So that's another concern noted is that there's existing development that has already occurred along. So that's another concern noted is that there's existing development that has already occurred along some of these lots, along Greyhound Drive. With no sidewalk, including Loves, there's. At least two others up at the north end. So kind of that concern on requiring it for this one, but not the others, and how will it?
How do they resolve it?
How will it ultimately get connected? Um, so I, I guess at this point, we're kind of. Staff is recommending that that not be added as a condition. I sit on the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, so I understand it, but it is complex in this one, and if. Uh, at some point in the future, it is looked to do a sidewalk. In that area, it could potentially be done as an infill project. Including across existing developed operators.
I guess my only other question with that then is, so if a truck is using the car wash and. I don't know if there's a way that they would ever leave it there and want to walk down to Loves. I'm just curious how, like, would they have to go along Greyhound then, along the shoulder, or?
They would, or.
Okay.
Walk all the way down to Titan Trail. However, I don't know if they would want a truck to sit there because.
Oh, their site plan, which is on page twenty of the packet, you put it up on the screen, does show a row of parking.
Right.
I don't necessarily know that that's intended for park there so you can walk down to Loves or not.
Okay.
I could envision it getting used as that. But even with sidewalk, i- i- if sidewalk was put along Greyhound for this s- stretch of property, there's still. A vacant lot to the south.
Yeah.
And then the portion that Loves owns and has no sidewalk on before you would actually get to Loves driveway.
Well, how do you, how do you bridge the ditch?
Yeah.
You know, when you get to the intersection of Cyclone Drive and Greyhound Drive with a sidewalk along Greyhound?
Yeah.
Just some engineering logistical things that have to be.
Exactly.
Is one, is there one entrance that, like, it's gonna be designated only entrance and then one that's only exit?
Correct, the entrance would be on, um, Gray, off of Greyhound, and then the exit off of Cyclone.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
So the only side that sidewalk is required on is on the north side of Cyclone there, correct?
Correct, correct, and a good chunk of that was put in when Warren built. The aerial on the screens too, doesn't show Warren.
So there's the sidewalk along there, to the west of that, there's still vacant lots, but at some point when they develop sidewalk will be required there as well.
And so then, in terms of the south side of Cyclone, it's just because it wasn't included in the plat?
Yes, that's, um, this Schrader with staff, yeah, philosophies on sidewalks, particularly in. Non-residential subdivisions has kind of shifted over the years with. At one point, it being very typical that no sidewalks were required on any non-residential subdivisions. And then it, um, started to become our practice to require them on one side, at least kind of figuring we could. Create that network within a subdivision, um. You know, now Complete Streets is pushing for sidewalks on both sides of all subdivisions, residential. And non-residential, but as we deal with developments within existing subdivisions that were approved differently. It creates some complexities.
Yeah, I think the one largest hurdle for this is the nature of how water is drained in that. With it being so close to the green belt, um, it's, it's very sensitive to water, in fact, we had to raise an elevation. Well, not we, but somebody had to raise the elevation of the soil in quite a few of those areas.
Yeah, the, yeah, the area's been generally raised several feet.
Is the applicant here or on? Do you wanna come forward and, um, state your name and if you'd like to address the commission? Sure.
My name is Black Johnson, I reside at thirty thirty three, two hundred and ninety Street in Fredericksburg, Iowa. I currently work in Waterloo. Um, it's actually, how this all came about was like, it's actually the first one of its kind. Here in, actually, in the, in the whole Midwest, uh, because it's actually fully automated. I guess it's touches, it's not people actually inside the bays spraying it down by hand or brushing it down. It's just like going through a car wash and it's awfully automated, it's, it's, it has brushes, of course. But it's not human manned on the inside. So the entire wash takes about two to three minutes. Yeah, so from start to finish, from the going to the, the entrance out to the exit, it's that fast. So it'd be, uh, pretty neat, that's all I said.
Any questions?
What's, what's the, what's the intent of the parking, uh, area, is that for them to temporarily park there for a few hours, is it for overnight parking, or is it?
It is, it is, yeah, just, you know, just, it's really basically a temporary parking thing, just to park for a couple hours.
Okay.
I'm actually currently in the trucking business now, um, I'm a business manager. And, uh, where, where I currently work, we actually have that as well. So I have to just come in and park this for a couple hours, I mean, and just take off. Like you said, what we're trying to do is, um, because you're right, they're not supposed to park on the street. So, we're, we're trying to do our part over there as well, is to take those trucks and say, you don't need to beat the street. Park right here, it doesn't cost you anything, and get you out of the way of traffic.
That's great, because I know that the Loves does a, a big business there, and I know those truckers need places to go, so.
They do, yeah.
You know, I know, I, I've driven by there myself when it's just been completely packed at times, and there is nowhere else for them to park, so.
They, they do, yeah, they do an awful lot of business, and then what's nice about this is that our business is not, um. It doesn't stand out as far as like what the, what the industry is down in the industrial part. Every, basically, everything down, it's a first you have mall or art, art kind of, but everything is, is truck, trucker related. So it just really coincides well with what we're trying to, trying to do, and then fit that need down.
Anyone on phone or by Zoom have questions? Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? Or on Zoom or a phone? Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved surfing.
Second, Trost.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Now that we have a motion.
Well, I sticko, I will make a motion to approve the request by Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC. For a site plan amendment for a truck washing facility in the BP Business Park District located southwest of thirty one twenty four Titan Trail. Uh, with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including. But not limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage setbacks, et cetera.
Second, surfing.
Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried.
Oh, yep, so, um, this is just a recommendation, so the, uh, request will now wandle to city council. Final decision, I think a hearing date has been set. Within the next few weeks, the council hearing date will be established.
Thank you. Hey, the time is now four thirty nine P M, and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Grant Park LLC, Howard Allen. For a site plan amendment for a new retail center in the S one Shopping Center District located at twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard. Pages thirty three through forty three of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Emily Saliga, stating, I am Lee Saliga, do her. Hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and site plan were mailed to each individual on the attached list. By regular mail on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, we have a motion received and placed this notice on file.
So moved Trost.
Second, Listaco.
All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, the staff report, please.
This is starting off with staff, the applicant's requesting to build a four unit retail strip center at the former location of Long John Silver's A and W. Um, at two seven seven five Crossroads Boulevard, at the intersection of Penny Street and Crossroads Boulevard. The request to construct a retail store would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as it's located in the Crossroads Shopping Center area. Um, the proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The area is served by Crossroads Boulevard and Penny Street, which are local streets, and Penny's, um, street connects to San Martin Drive, which is a minority area. There are no trails in the immediate project area or sidewalks. However, Complete Streets Advisory Committee has recommended sidewalks on both Penny Street and Crossroads Boulevard. The area in question has been zoned S one Shopping Center District, and zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance back in nineteen sixty nine. Surrounding land uses and their zoning destination shows falls to the north is San Martin Drive and Commercial, Zone C two Commercial District. To the south is Crossroads Boulevard and Commercial, Zone S one Shopping Center District. To the east is Penny Street, Crossroads Boulevard, and Commercial, Zone S one Shopping Center District. To the west is Commercial and San Martin Drive, Zone S one Shopping Center District. The applicant's are requesting to build a new retail complex with four units at the former site of Geelong John Silver's A and W at the corner of Crossroads Boulevard and Penny Street. The four retail locations will have square footages of fifteen hundred twenty seven square feet, fifteen hundred three square feet, thirty four hundred and eighty square feet. And thirty five hundred twenty six square feet, for a total square footage of ten thousand thirty six square feet. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for every two hundred fifty square feet of retail space for buildings between five thousand and fifty thousand square feet. With ten thousand thirty six square feet, the project require forty one parking spaces to handicap spots. Should be noted that parking is only calculated by total customer use areas. Source store rooms and mechanical rooms, for example, would not be included in the parking space calculations. But staff does not have a floor plan at this time. The submitted site plan does show a total of fifty parking spaces and four handicap spots, which exceeds the parking requirements. The submitted site plan also shows a drive through lane, which would loop around the north side of property with a drive up window be, um. Being the unit closest to the west property line. The applicant's also proposed to move the curb cut along Penny Street slightly to the north while using existing curb cut, um, from Crossroads Boulevard. Their proposed site plan includes an area being proposed to vacate along San Martin Drive, just north of the property. Um, also the building's being designed to face San Martin Drive, unlike most buildings along Crossroads Boulevard, which face Crossroads. Or Flumang. At their June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three meeting, the Complete Streets Advisory Committee recommended additional sidewalks on both Penny Street and Crossroads Boulevard. However, it should be noted that it's extremely difficult to add sidewalks on Crossroads Boulevard, presence of utility boxes. Additional right of way, um, easement would be needed to accommodate sidewalk. Um, so planning is looking at feasibility of sidewalks and, um, given the limited right of way and multiple utilities and that may conflict. Um, as noted, the, um, applicants are, um, there's also a vacate request of San Martin Drive. That is, and, um, they would, this would be part of their property, once it's vacated. There is a thirty foot utility easement on the east side of the property, and that would continue into the vacate area. As it does contain a water line. Um, fire department noted that if restaurants located in the larger units, sprinklers would be required. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Grant Park LLC, Howard Allen, for a site plan amendment. For a new retail center in the S one Shopping Center District, located at twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard, be approved for the following reasons. Request in conformance with the future land use map, um, and comprehensive plan. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact to surround the area. Um, the project would bring new life to a part city that has suffered due to the lack of retail growth in the area. And with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited parking, landscaping, drainage. Setbacks, et cetera.
Any initial questions? Is the applicant on the phone or by Zoom?
He was on.
Anyone else on phone or Zoom here to speak on this agenda item?
Yeah, this is Howard.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen, if you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself and if you have anything to address with the commission?
Uh, no, Howard Allen, uh, two one one seven Falls Avenue, Waterloo. Um, I don't have any questions, uh, I tried contacting my builder to make sure he was, could be here too, but, uh, he didn't respond.
Any questions from the commission for Mr. Allen? Anyone else on phone or Zoom here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved surfing.
Second, sure.
Thanks. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed.
This is Schrader with staff, I would just note regarding the sidewalk issue, um. On Crossroads Boulevard, there's just unfortunately not enough room, um, and it's not feasible to. The property line, the, the, the utilities that you can see on the screen in front of you are actually on their private property. Um, and there's just not room in the remaining right of way. You know, we could look to have them dedicate additional right of way or an easement for sidewalk. But that would only work if all of these utilities were relocated, so Crossroads Boulevard's not feasible. Um, and. On Penny's is definitely very tight as well. Um, it would require dedication of additional right of way. Or an easement for it to go kind of in this area here, you need a, a minimum, um, separation of the sidewalk to the street. For safety and snow storage, um, and that. It's maybe possible o- on here, but it would definitely, um, cause the, the plans to have to shift.
This is Commissioner Wilber, i- in that, the part of San Martin that's right behind that, I can't recall, does that have a sidewalk?
No, so, there's.
Does on the other side of San Martin?
No.
Like on the side that Target's on?
No.
Yeah, yeah, the frontage road does, but on the far north side.
That would be right out.
Yeah, there's a section along the frontage road on the far north side.
Yeah.
That does have some sidewalk. But otherwise, San Martin itself has no sidewalk.
That might just be something in the future to consider, especially if you, some of those properties, you know, closer to, on the side where the mall is. Especially if the mall redevelops or there's more growth back there, is somehow allowing for more pedestrian access along. Kind of even just the main route along San Martin. Um, I can't remember the. Um, you know, the topography behind those between San Martin, but if, you know, at some point, there could be a consideration of making San Martin more. Pedestrian frien- friendly, that would be.
You know, at some point, there could be consideration of making San Martin more pedestrian friendly, that would be.
Yeah, San Martin is also ditch drainage, but San Martin has a lot of right of way. Hence, the companion requested this to vacate some right of way, which matches up to what was already vacated on the properties. East of Penny Street or kind of northeast of Penny Street there where that's already been vacated. But even after that vacate, there's a good little bit of right of way because that was originally the um. State highway through town in that section.
Do we have a motion?
This is Commissioner Tros, uh, I make a motion that the request by Grant Park LLC. Howard Allen for a site plan amendment for a new retail center on the S one Shopping Center District located at twenty seven seventy five Crossroads. Crossroads Boulevard be approved. And with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage. Setbacks setbacks, et cetera.
Second shirt.
Any discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Lystico. Our future plans that we went through put an emphasis on accessibility to all areas of our city and we just. By doing this, we'd be kicking the can down the road. Uh, as you can see, there are no sidewalks on San Martin. There are no sidewalks on Penny Street. There are no sidewalks on Crossroads Boulevard and. I mean, eventually some businesses are going to wonder, well, how come people don't come here? Part of it might be because they can't get there on foot. Uh, that's just what I got.
Any other discussion?
This is Noel Anderson with staff. Just just to note, I I think we all agree with you. I I think we, you know, we've been working with Intercod for a pedestrian master plan. And and trying to plan it internally as well as the city. Um, but it's going to take some larger projects probably to get better pedestrian movements. Um, especially through the San Martin area, just given the ditch drainage and all that for the design. So it's it's going to be a larger project that we're going to have to try and tackle. And of course, you know, we're all, I think, anxious for redevelopment of the Crossroads Center as a whole. Um, looking at how some other shopping centers and all that is they utilize a variety of sidewalks and kind of delineated. Uh, pedestrian areas in the parking lots and all that. So there's probably some larger plans that we do definitely need to look at. Um, try to try to keep uh, our focus on getting to that point.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor stayed eye? Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a fifty foot by two hundred and twenty five foot, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square. Feet of San Martin right away in the S one Shopping uh, Center District located north of twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard.
This Dorn Office Staff. Um, the applicants are requesting to vacate a fifty by two hundred and twenty five square foot. Uh, twenty two fifty by two hundred and twenty five foot, eleven hundred twenty one hundred fifty fifty square foot. Section of San Martin right away in order to construct a new retail center. The applicants are requesting the vacated right of way, which is um, portion of San Martin Drive. San Martin Drive was originally state highway four twelve and the road was built with extremely wide right of way up to three three hundred feet. To allow for future expansion, which is, but it is no longer state highway. The extra right of way has been determined not to be needed. At any time in the future, Engine Department has approved the vacate. Because right of way was purchased by state highway purposes, the city is proceeding with the um, following state provisions for disposing of the property. The existing thirty foot easement along the east property line of two twenty twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard along Penny Street. Will continue into the vacate area. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a fifty by two hundred and twenty five foot, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square foot. Of San Martin right away in the S one Shopping Center District located north of twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance of future land use map and comprehensive plan. Their request would appear not to um, have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The right of way is not needed for future traffic needs. With the following conditions, subject to um, utility easement as needed over portions of the vacate area.
Any questions?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Lystico, on page forty eight. The vacate area goes right up to the street again and uh, doesn't leave any room for a sidewalk. Uh, is there any input on that?
It was, the um, vacate area was designed to match the property, the.
This is Schrader with staff. If if sidewalk were to be put in Penny Street, we would have to either evaluate putting it within the existing right of way. Or getting an easement from the adjacent property owner. And if it's done by easement from the adjacent property owner, that would just extend over the vacate area.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone on uh, phone or Zoom here to speak on this agenda item? Okay, do we have a motion?
This is Tros, I'll make a motion that the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate fifty feet by two hundred and twenty five feet. With an area of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of San Marin right of way in the S one Shopping Center District located north of twenty seven seventy five. Crossroads Boulevard be approved. With the following conditions, that is subject to the retention of utility easement as needed over portions of the vacate area.
Second surfing. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor stayed eye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carry. Next item on the agenda is a request by. Viz LLC. LLC for encroachment agreement to allow for a drive through lane in private sewer in the San Martin. Right away in that C one Z Z conditional zoning district located at ten thirty nine People's Square. At the northwest corner of the intersection of Kimball Avenue and San Martin Drive, pages fifty through sixty two of the packet. You have the staff report, please.
I'll make this quick since you're probably tired to hear my voice. There's an encouragement agreement um, on San Martin Drive um, at Kimball Avenue. The applicant had previously applied for encouragement agreement on a separate portion of the city right of way. Um, on Long Kimball Avenue, uh, which was approved by the Planning Commission on April twelfth to twenty twenty two. And city council on May sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Um, the applicant is now requesting a new encouragement agreement to install. Um. A drive, a drive through lane and um. And it, there's an existing sewer line that's going to become a private sewer line now. Um, the sewer line is currently public, but it only serves the applicant's development, so they are going to take over responsibility of it. So they need the um, encroachment agreement because the sewer will still be in public right of way. Therefore, the staff recommends that the request by VI two LLC for encouragement agreement. For a portion of the West San Martin Drive right away located in C one C Z conditional zoning district to allow for installation of a. Um, drive through lane and private sewer line. Um, south of twenty ten thirty nine People's Square be approved for fine reasons. The request would not appear to have any impacts around the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic in the area. And the area is not needed for future right of way, subject to the following conditions, that a fully signed and executed encouragement agreement be provided.
This is Commissioner Wilber. So can you share more information as to. Why sidewalks have never been recommended along like Kimball Avenue? Or that part of San Martin and um, and I also see like the street, Complete Streets Advisory Committee uh, Committee. They discussed it, but didn't make a recommendation. Do you have any additional information?
Well, Kimball Avenue, when they um, expanded it to four lanes, they did look at sidewalks, but. Um, due to grades and um. The right, the lack of right of way, they decided not to put in sidewalks, so at that time.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff and and I mean, Kimball was widened many years ago, but then it was more recently completely reconstructed. Uh, and that was actually before the Complete Streets Advisory Committee existed, but kind of the. Um, precursor to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee uh, was formed as kind of a little ad hoc. Uh, advisory group and they were looking for uh, as many pedestrian improvements along the Kimball Avenue project. As were possible and that advocacy group was able to get a lot of improvements in that corridor. But this south end connection towards San Martin was one that was heavily discussed and determined. It wasn't going to be feasible to put the sidewalk in there because of the right of way limitations. And the utilities, again, with the redevelopment of this, it could have potentially been required. To um. Uh, you know, dedicate additional right of way or an easement so that it could fit in this uh, stretch. But considering that it was determined as part of the Kimball reconstruction to not be required along here. We didn't, when the encouragement agreement went through before, it was determined. We weren't going to require sidewalk here because it's not going to connect to anything further to the north. Um, when the Kimball reconstruction was done and and side pedestrian improvements were being looked at. One of the things that they did include um, was the um. I think it's called a hawk signal, uh, flashing rectangular flashing beacon signal uh, at uh. Pheasant, uh, which is one block to the west, there's sidewalk along there and that can um, get a pedestrian across. San Martin at an actual crosswalk with um, that crossing beacon that the um, pedestrian can hit to. Get an uh, you know, a lighted crossing. And and again, on on San Martin because of both the, I mean, there's not a right of way limitation, there's plenty of right of way there. But the ditch drainage and the location of utilities. We have just as different projects have been going along in there, we we haven't been requiring sidewalk. We really would need to be part of kind of an overall master plan and and a a larger. Infill sidewalk project, I think, if we're going to put in sidewalk. Rather than requiring it very piecemeal where it doesn't connect to anything probably for very long periods of time.
Uh, follow up question to that then, why on both sides of Kimball then at that intersection are there? They have the sidewalk. Uh, I don't know what you call them, the technical name for it, but if you look, it's on that map down there in the lower corner and it's on the same side of Kimball. So right now, there's a place to stand there at that intersection, but then there's nowhere to go.
Yeah.
What, I mean, is, was that just a requirement or?
Yeah, the curb ramps were put in as part of the reconstruction. I'm not really sure. I don't know, Jamie, do you have any more insight on that? Yeah, they were put in, I know they were put in as part of the reconstruction. I'm considering. It must have been considered an ADA um, accessibility thing, but yeah, I I'm not exactly sure either because they don't connect to anything. So you can walk all the way around the intersection just fine. You just can't go anywhere from there.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, to Commissioner um. Uh, Cody's for, you know, earlier comment about, you know, doing this piecemeal. You know, um, I realize. We're at this point where we kind of had to do a bigger reconstruction, but you know, with all the work that we've done into the future land use. The principles that we've wanted to, you know, um. Highlight in this community and what were important to bigger projects, it just seems again like we kick it, you know, continue to kick it down the road. You know, that whole, especially since I've been on the commission, we've had that whole stretch along San Martin and Kimball has really grown. And so we continue to have more and more businesses there that no one can access if they're walking and you have, you know, um, plenty of. Stores over there, you have um, gas stations, you know, you have other sidewalks and other trails very close by. Uh, that, you know, as a bigger um, community plan, we want to promote. You know, along Kimball, I know I've said this before for other requests, not necessarily for the applicants, but as a bigger. Um, you know, principle to keep in mind, Kimball should have. You know, it should have, we should have bike lanes, we should have sidewalks and bike lanes um, connecting to the trails. The trail that now goes along Shawless that will connect to the water park, to the theme park. You know, I think it's just big, part of a bigger plan and I know, I know that's hard to do it, you know, when we have the piecemeal uh, um, request like this. But I think at some point as a community, we need to come forward and say, okay, we want to actually put some of the, you know. Um, start putting, you know, practices in place where these principles are just floating around. Um, so again, I I realize here feasibility, but you know, like you just said, you've got each part of the intersection corners. Where it's like you can walk up, but then you can't go anywhere. So you just have pedestrians walking around construction and streets and it's. You know, as that continues to grow, the traffic just increases. So I think, you know, as a community, at some point, we need to decide, when do we want to start actually working on some of these? Bigger sidewalk and pedestrian access and even going beyond that, you know, bike lanes. Um, trails, you know, um, so it's not just pedestrians, but that's what I'll say.
Commissioner Tros, I know we're getting a little sidetracked here away from the the primary issue, but I can't just, I I agree with everything speaking in regard in the sidewalks. I actually live in the area and I. You know, I try to walk as much as I can every other day. And there's times I know that uh, just from a sidewalk planning standpoint. Um, you have to go all the way over to Forest Street at the west end of San Martin to get across to the main trail that actually leads you down to Greenbelt or leads you all the way over to the water park.
I think the bigger issue is is bike trails. Walking trails.
Yes, exactly.
I live along fourth as well and it's, it's horrible to get out to the main trail that we want, if we want to go to Greenbelt or um, Shawless. It's terrible.
Right.
Um, yeah, and what you were saying about Kimball, it's, I mean, getting out that way, there's, I mean, it's a really dense area with a lot of people that live back in there that would like to be able to utilize. Utilize that, but you have to, you know, if you want to go on a bike ride, you have to take your bike and put it in a car or you're riding on the street and it's.
Haynesboro, Kimball, Hammond and twenty one. There's really no way to get across to that south side of Highway twenty to get to that main bike. That bike trail. That's, that's sort of the concern, you have a lot of core population here in town, coming from the center of town, they may want to go out that way and. What's being done in order to accomplish that?
Yep, I agree with you completely.
I mean, for me, it's that we have the beginning of this infrastructure in place with the little corners in it. And then we as a city are going to pay to maintain those corners indefinitely and they're never going to actually serve anything. And it's just a huge waste of taxpayer dollars. They gotta repaint those crosswalks every couple of years, all that, you know, it's like.
With that being said, it is, they're only requesting an encroachment agreement. They don't own, they don't own the property. So we can always come back and put sidewalks there, but thanks for letting us uh, vent a little bit.
It just seemed to be a common theme today, so I think just making sure that, yeah, our commission is committed to that. We have spent a lot of time. I know the advisory committee staff is as well. So just knowing that the commission, you have our support in that um. In that area, so. Having said that, anyone else um, have or here to speak on this agenda item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, I just, they both, I just had one question and I I sent an email to John earlier today. And and direct request an encouragement agreement to allow them to have a drive up lane and that lane is already poured. Is this something that we? That these come in after the fact? Cause that that drive up lane has been poured for some time now.
This is Schrader with staff. Um, I, it's been a little while since I've been by there, but uh, last time I was by there. They were framing it, but it wasn't poured, so um, apparently it's been poured since. I was not aware of that, but.
It's probably been there a month or two.
Oh. Powers was there.
Hey, when I took the pictures a couple of weeks.
I was going to say, it's definitely been less than two.
I apologize, the building's been, the building's been up.
Oh yeah, the building's been up and some concrete work has been done, but the portion covered by this encroachment wasn't.
I retract my previous comment.
Uh, as of about two weeks ago. Here in this bottom.
This is Anderson with staff. I can note that, yeah, I mean, they've been, you know, as we all know that they've been working on that site for quite some time. Um, we've gone through quite a few iterations of what could work there for an encroachment agreement and including uh, uh, them working with engineering department about the abandonment of the sewer portions and all that to, to better use it for themselves and not have the city going back and down to their parking lot in the future. So um, I think they took a little bit of risk on their own part to try and keep the project moving, knowing that city staff was supportive of the, the current encroachment agreement. But there was definitely some risk on their part in pouring ahead of time.
Councilman Bozeman, did that answer your question or did you have additional?
No, no, that answered my question, thank you.
Okay. Any additional, um, anyone additional here to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Turk, did you indicate you were, you know, abstaining this one for conflict of interest?
Did you mean move in second already?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Would you like to?
This is Commissioner Trost, uh, I recommend the request by VI two LLC for an encroachment agreement for a portion of west San Martin Drive right of way located in the C one. CZ conditional zoning district to allow for the installation of a parking lot and private sewer line south of ten thirty nine People's Square be approved. Subject to that a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement be provided.
Second surfing. Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and one extension.
One extension.
Motion's carried. Any other discussion items? Next meeting is August eighth. Um, if, just a reminder, everyone's been doing a great job, but if you're going to be on vacation or um, you know in advance that you won't be here for that meeting, please let staff know as soon as possible. You know, that's a big.
I would like to thank you, Virginia, for being a tremendous leader and chairperson and paying your attention to details. It keeps us not only legal, but um, teaches us a lot. So I thank you so much for your service and your time on this commission.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
My pleasure to work and thank you staff.
Yep, hopefully we'll see you again.
Somewhere sometime. That said, is a motion to adjourn?
Should we choose our vice president though?
I think we're doing next time, is that what we're? Yeah. Next time.
Gotcha.
Did, oh, go to you.
I thought I heard, I said so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Got it.
Um, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you.